In commission to order, it's about two minutes after four. The first item on the agenda, excuse me, is the approval of the June 5th, 2018 agenda. Are there any changes?
I think one, no changes, this Anderson with staff, no changes to the agenda. You have issued an updated preliminary plat that is on the agenda in front of you.
Okay, all right. We'll entertain a motion for, excuse me, approval of the June 5th agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Both, same sign. Next item is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of May 1st, 2018. Those were sent out to you with your packets. If there are no changes or corrections, we'll entertain a motion for their approval.
Motion to approve the minutes of the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting from last month as presented.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded for approval. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Next item is the financial report, April 2018. Mr. Noel, would you like to, or Mr. Anderson, rather, would you like to?
I do not have one. You can have mine. Sure looks great.
This is Anderson with staff. As you can see, this goes through April 30th, 2018. I think we're pretty much on, on track for most everything on here, actually. We're a little bit ahead in some, again, as you look at some of them for salary reimbursement or things like that, at 123%. That is because of our county work with the wind farm has taken a lot of staff time. We're actually up in a little bit of recording and publication revenue as well. In terms of expenses, we are pretty much right where we should be with subscriptions being a little bit higher. But again, those are not necessarily month to month, some of them are paid in advance, so we should be in good shape.
This is Butch, and I just have one question, it's probably silly, but right above where you were talking about salary reimbursement, because I had circled that myself. Where it talks about service charges, what does that entail?
Service charges, so that would be for fees paid to be on the Planning Commission Board of Adjustment, things like that, to go through the process. So there are filing fees for items to go through the process.
Oh, okay.
To try and cover our mailing costs and paper and all that.
All right, thank you very much.
Yep.
Any other questions? If not, we'll entertain a motion for acceptance of the financial report as presented.
I will so move.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Now we come to the oral presentation time. This is a time when, when anyone in the room may talk about anything related to Planning and Zoning Commission that is not on today's agenda. If you would, please come forward to the podium, give us your name, address, and whatever you would like to speak about, and please keep your comments less than five minutes. Okay, seeing no one, we'll move on to plats. First item is the request by Michael Dahl and Brian Kennett for preliminary plat of Ken Dahl, first plat, a four-lot residential subdivision located at 4245 West Fourth. Staff report.
This is Andrew Staff, and I apologize, we just got an updated preliminary plat, and I don't know if you have one yet, Tavis. So it's different than what's in the staff report, we just got it, so I did not have the opportunity to update the report. So when I get to parts about the plat, I'll explain how things were changed. Property is at 4245 West Fourth Street. Proposed plat is 3.01 acres in size for a residential subdivision. It is served by West Fourth Street from the north and south, which is a minor arterial. And proposed subdivision would not appear to negatively impact vehicular or pedestrian traffic in the area. San Martin is a quarter mile to the north, and West Shallows Road is three quarters of miles to the south, and both of those are also minor arterials. Then Highway 20 is just in the north, which is a principal arterial with nearby interchanges at Highway 63 and Ainsborough Avenue. There is no public sidewalk located along the east side of West Fourth Street, but there is sidewalk on the west side. In the plat I did hand out to you just a few moments ago, they do show proposed sidewalk along the east side, along the frontages of the lots and the proposed subdivision. We would look at potentially having a crossing somewhere in the, in that area to allow residences to make their way over to the west side of West Fourth Street. Because further to the north, over West Fourth Street, over Highway 20, the pedestrian side is on the west side of the bridge or overpass that goes over the Highway 20. So there is no pedestrian accommodations on the other side of the overpass. Site is currently going through the rezone process to be zoned R1, one and two family residence district. Has been zoned A1 agricultural district since the adoption of the ordinance in 1969. No buffers would be required with this plating request. It's not located within a special flood hazard area. Plat would not appear to have a negative impact upon drainage in the area. At the southwest corner of Lot 4, they are showing a proposed 50 by 62 stormwater easement. However, they are showing the existing contours on the site. They still need to provide us with proposed contours and show how that water is going to make its way to that storm retention or detention area to hold back any storm water in a rain event. The plat is 3.01 acres in size. Lot 1 is the property that currently has the farmhouse on it that was built in 1919. And then they are proposing three more lots for residential use. So looking at the updated plat I did hand out to you, if you look to the east of the lots that are proposed, you'll see Track B, which is .44 acres in size, and Track C, which is .14 acres in size. It's proposed to have Track B go with Lot 10 of Audubon Park, 5th Edition, which is just to the east there. And Track C would go with Lot 11 of Audubon Park, 5th Edition. Track A is actually the tract of West Fourth Street, which is roadway by easement. So when it does go through the final plat process, that area will be dedicated as public right-of-way then. So, I'll go through my list here. They do show the intervals of the contours at one foot. In my original staff report, I did have a average lot size of 19,522 square feet, but there could be a little change to this if there's some additional properties being added. But they are showing proposed and existing utilities, the service to plat. The sewer to serve, the sanitary sewer will have to come from the intersection of West Fourth Street and Audubon Drive North to serve the plat. There's also a 12-inch water main in West Fourth Street, which they are showing now. And they are correctly labeling the street as West Fourth Street, no longer Hoff Road. There has been discussion if we need to have any utility easements around the perimeter of the subdivision, as the abutting subdivisions have easements along their rear property lines. So I may look at having those mirrored to match those, to allow for any access to utilities that may be in the rear yards of the abutting lots or the proposed subdivision. They are showing West Fourth Street curb to curb now. Staff is recommending approval of the subdivision for preliminary plat located at 4245 West Fourth Street. As one, the request would not appear to negatively impact the area. Would provide for new residential development, which would be compatible with existing development in nearby vicinity. Request would not appear to have a negative impact on pedestrian traffic conditions in the area. It is in conformance with the future land use map and comprehensive plan for this area, which does designate as low density residential. And with the condition that the preliminary plat is updated as required by staff before it is forwarded to the city council. So there are some small minor changes that do need to be made before we can send it to council, but we don't see those as too large or significant changes.
Okay, are there any questions for staff?
Yes, does this, I'm trying to make sure that it's in the right item, but I have this question here that it talks about accessory buildings for this item.
Yes.
Does that fit with the requirement within the ordinance about having accessory buildings? I know we've had that issue with a couple items in past agendas about the issue of having too many accessory buildings or there was a certain limit to number of accessory buildings in the.
Yeah, I apologize for going over that part, I didn't mean to do that. But, so if you looked on Track B there, there's an old barn on the southern southwest part of that track. The owner of Lot 10 in Audubon Park, 5th Edition, would like to purchase that area, like I mentioned, but they'd also like to have that barn. So if they do that, they would then be exceeding the 1,800 square foot maximum for detached structures, which then would require some sort of variance issued by the Board of Adjustment to exceed that square footage allotment for detached structures. So make sure I didn't leave anything else out, but... They believe, you know, before that can be done, the land needs to be sold and plat approved before we can have a variance on that.
Okay, and then there are no contours. Now, this is a question that's relating to this item, it's on page, let me get to the bottom, page 13 in the packet. It talks about, there are no contours shown on how this item will be graded, which is a requirement for the preliminary plat. When you passed out the update, then I'm assuming that that was shown.
No, they are showing the existing contours as they are, and then below that, they said they are not proposing any grading. Well, there's going to have to be some grading done to get this storm water to this detention basin on the corner of Lot 4 there. So they do still need to provide us with that information to show how they're going to direct the water to that area.
And has engineers' concerns been addressed here? Engineer noted that the site would need to be served by the sewer extension. That kind of thing has been addressed with them?
Yes, yes, they are aware of that.
Thank you.
Yep.
I just have one question. On page 12 toward the bottom, the area in question is currently going through the rezoning process before the city council. Is that still in process that hasn't been done? Is that right?
Oops, I believe it's going through its third reading right now, so it's almost done. So once that third reading is done, it's approved.
I think they approved it.
Oh, they did, okay, well, it's approved.
Okay, that was, that was going to be my question, don't we have to rezone this? Okay.
Yep.
Anyone else have a question for staff? Okay, thank you, Tim. Now we come to the time when anybody in the audience may speak for or against this item on the agenda. Again, please come to the, to the, oh, let me back up, I'm sorry. Is the developer here or someone representing the developer? Okay, now we come to the time, as I said before. Please give us your name, address, and keep your comments within five minutes. Okay, seeing no one, we'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the preliminary plat of 3.01 acres into four residential lots located at 4245 West Fourth Street with the condition that the preliminary plat is updated as required by staff before it is forwarded to the city council.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded, any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. I carries, thank you. Quick question, Noel, can we combine numbers two and three, since they're both relating to the same item, only one's preliminary and one's final?
Yes, you may.
Do we need a motion for that?
Thank you. I don't think so, I think when you, when you actually do the motion, you can just take the motion for both of them.
Okay, all right. Well, since our, both of, I'm sorry, since our next two agenda items are related. First one is a request by CGA Engineering on behalf of Thirty-Something Real Estate LLC for the preliminary plat of Magnolia Hills, a 12-lot residential subdivision located adjacent to and northwest of 1,900 West Chester Road. And item three is a request by CGA Engineering on behalf of Thirty-Something Real Estate LLC for the final, final plat of Magnolia Hills, a 12-lot residential subdivision located adjacent to and northwest of 1,900 West Chester Road. Does anybody object if we take those together?
That's what I was going to suggest.
Okay, all right, staff report.
Okay, yeah, this is a request by CGA Engineering on behalf of Thirty-Something Real Estate LLC for the preliminary plat of 10.02 acres for Magnolia Hills to allot for development of a 12-lot residential subdivision. The applicant is requesting a preliminary plat to allow for the development of 11 single-family homes on 11 lots and nine twin homes on one line adjacent to and northwest of the 1,900 West Chester Road. The request for the preliminary plat would not appear to have a negative impact upon the surrounding area. Would appear that the proposed residential uses would blend in well with the surrounding neighborhood, which consists of twin homes, apartments, condos, single-family homes, and vacant land. The average lot size for the 11 proposed single-family residential lots is 23,681 square feet. The size of the lot where the twin homes will be placed is on 3.32 acres, which is 1,444 and 619 square feet, or 8,034 square feet per unit. The proposed preliminary plat would appear to have minimal impact on the surrounding traffic conditions in the area. The proposed development would be served by West Chester Road, which is classified as a local street, and West Fourth Street, which is classified as a principal arterial. Development shall also be served by newly constructed local roads such as Azalea Drive and Redbud Court. Traffic engineer has noted that trees near the southerly intersection of Redbud Court and West Fourth Street will need to be removed to ensure adequate site distance at the intersection. The proposed development is approximately 1,800 feet away from Sergeant Row Trail, but there are no current plans to link the trail at this time. The land has been zoned R3, multiple residence districts since 1969, and the surrounding land uses and their zoning designations. Basically, the north, southeast, and west, the land mostly consists of multifamily homes and condos and is either zoned R4, multiple residence district, or R3, multiple residence district. The surrounding area consists predominantly of multifamily homes, twin homes, condos, and vacant land. The majority of the housing construction occurred during the 2000s and 2010s. There are currently trees along the north, southeast, west borders of the property, no buffering required per ordinance standards. The preliminary plat denotes a 31,363 square foot stormwater detention retention area known as Track A on the southeast side of the proposed preliminary plat, and stormwater drainage easements labeled in the rear yards for various lots. Majority of the preliminary plat area in question is not located within a special flood area, hazard area is identified in the federal insurance, flood insurance rate map, community map. However, Track A, stormwater management area, is in the 100-year flood plain, but none of the proposed single-family or twin homes are located in a special flood hazard area. Hoover Middle Schools are located approximately 1.6 miles east of the proposed development, and the project's also served by Orange Elementary School in West High. There is an existing 8-inch to 10-inch sanitary sewer main and 8-inch water main and 18-inch storm sewer with 4- to 6-drain tile located underneath West Chester Road. In addition, there is an existing 12-inch water main, 8-inch sanitary sewer main, and 18-inch storm sewer with 4-inch drain tile located under West Fourth Street. New water and sewer mains are proposed underneath or along Azalea Drive or Redbud Court. The proposed development is in conformance with the future land use map, which designates the area as low-density residential. The area is also noted as a primary growth area within the comprehensive land use plan. The applicant is requesting the plat 10.02 acres to construct 11 single-family homes and nine twin homes as part of the Magnolia Hills and addition. For single-family home lots, the size of lots in size range from 13,068 square feet to 32,234 square feet with average lot size of 23,681 square feet. West range from 67.5 to 221.85, and range from 129.35 feet to 283.69 feet deep. Each property shows a 20-foot setback from the front yard, 20 or more from rear property lines, and five on the sides. These setbacks all meet the minimum requirements of the R3 multiple residence district. The lot size for the twin home Lot 12 is 144,619 square feet, four, nine twin homes, or 8,034 square feet per unit. The area is owned R3 multiple residence district. Staff believes that the new residential development will be compatible with and have a positive impact on its surrounding neighborhood. The preliminary plat shows some requirements such as existing topographic contours, legal description, property lines, dimensions, property setback lines, date north, arrows, sizes of right-of-way, and sizes of the proposed lots, street west water, sanitary sewer, adjoining subdivision, storm sewer locations, and street names. The preliminary plat that I handed out, the only thing that was added are the proposed contours. That's the only thing that's been added to that map compared to the map that's located in the staff report. The preliminary plat is missing the following features, proposed contours, telephone cable, electric gas, street servicing, utility easements, street light locations, sidewalk locations, and existing vegetation. The engineering department noted the following for the Magnolia Village, which is where the twin homes are located. Street name is unacceptable, need a minimum 50 feet of roadway easement, private water and sanitary sewer and private street, and easement required for property sanitary sewer connection, crossing adjacent property at West Fourth Street. Engineering department noted the following for Magnolia Hills. Street name is unacceptable, needs to be changed, utility easements at front lot lines needed by MEC, add bearings to all lot lines as a public street. Current minimums are street cross-section, granular sub-based, no recycled material, 6-inch longitudinal sub-drain tile with stubs to each lot for sump pump discharge connections, width of curb and gutter. It's typical 24 inches, but 30 will be acceptable, gutter pan thickness to match street paving thickness, paving thickness. HMA 3-inch base, 2.5 intermediate, 2-inch surface, sidewalk required along frontage and Track B and New Street and West Chester, and label diameter of cul-de-sac. Engineering department also had the following comments regarding the preliminary plat. Show West Fourth Street to West right-of-way line, including utilities and existing accesses on west side of Fourth Street for review of alignment with proposed accesses. Show existing 17-inch sanitary sewer along with West Fourth Street. With all existing easement impact, design of sewer detention along West Fourth Street. Provide site distance evaluation for post- accesses on West Fourth Street, existing trees to be removed, tree patches in West Fourth Street for water connections, tree patches in West Fourth Street for water connections. Provide curve data, seven, show the area of Track A that is in the flood zone, and eventually we'll need a stormwater plan report and IDNR general permit number two prior to pulling the building permit. Therefore, staff recommends that the requests for the preliminary plat in the R3 multiple residence district be approved with the following reasons. The proposed use would appear to have a positive impact on the area by bringing additional housing on vacant land within residential area. Proposed development is within the density requirements set forth in the zoning ordinance for this particular zoning district. The proposed use would not appear to have negative impact on traffic and pedestrian conditions in the area. That missing information will be submitted prior to preliminary plat being forwarded to the city council for approval. And then I'll, should I just go ahead and read the, okay, I'm going to go ahead and then just read the final plat and just go ahead and go onto that. Okay, yes, once again, request by CGA Engineering on behalf of Thirty-Something Real Estate LLC for the final plat of the 10.02 acres for Magnolia Hills to allow for the development of a 12-lot residential subdivision. And then I wanted to note for the final plat, they're just going to name it Magnolia Hills. The preliminary plat, they did call it Magnolia Villas and Magnolia Hills, but now it's just going to be.
The whole thing.
The whole thing for Magnolia Hills, for the final plat and the preliminary plat. The applicant is requesting a final plat to allow for the development of 11 single-family homes on 11 lots and nine twin homes on one line adjacent to northwest of 1,900 West Chester Road. The request for the final plat would not appear to have a negative impact upon the surrounding area. It would appear that the proposed residential uses would blend in well with the surrounding neighborhood, which consists of twin homes, apartments, condos, single-family homes, and vacant land. The average lot size for the 11 proposed single-family residential lots is 23,681 square feet. The size of the lot where the twin homes will be placed is on 3.32 acres, which is 1,44,619 square feet, or 8,034 square feet per unit. The proposed final plat would appear to have minimal impact on the surrounding traffic conditions in the area. The proposed development would be served by West Chester Road, which is classified as a local street, and West Fourth Street, which is classified as a principal arterial. Development shall also be served by newly constructed local roads such as Azalea Drive and Redbud Court. Traffic engineer has noted that trees near the southerly intersection of Redbud Court and West Fourth Street will need to be removed to ensure adequate site distance at the intersection. The proposed development is approximately 1,800 feet away from the Sergeant Row Trail, but there are no current plans to link up with the trail at the time. The line has been zoned R3 in multiple residence districts since 1969. The surrounding land uses and their designations as followed. Basically zoned R3, the surrounding areas either zoned R4 or R3 and consist of multifamily homes and condos. Surrounding area consists predominantly of multifamily homes, twin homes, condos, vacant land, and the majority of the housing construction occurred during the 2000s and 2010s. There are currently trees along the north, south, and east of the borders of the property, no buffering is required by ordinance standards. The final plat denotes a 31,363 square foot storm detention retention area known as Track A on the southwest side of the proposed final plat, and the stormwater drainage easements labeled in the rear yards for various lots. The majority of the final plat area in question is not located within a special flood hazard areas identified by FEMA. Track A stormwater management area is in the 100-year flood plain, but none of the proposed single-family or twin homes are located in a special flood hazard area. There is an existing 8-to-10-inch sanitary sewer main in. There is an existing eight-to-10-inch sanitary sewer main, eight-inch water main, and 18-inch storm sewer and four-to-six inch drain tile located underneath West Chester Road. In addition, there is an existing 12-inch water main, eight-inch sanitary sewer main and eight-inch sewer main and four-inch drain tile located under West Forest Street. New water and sewer mains will be proposed underneath or along Azalea Drive and Redbud Court. proposed development is in conformance with the future land use map, which designates this area as low-density residential. The area is also noted as in the primary growth area within the comprehensive plan. The applicant is requesting a final plat of 10.02 acres to construct the 11 single-family homes and nine twin homes lots as a part of the Magnolia Hills addition. For single-family lot sizes, the size of lots ranging in size from 13,068 square feet to 32,234 square feet with an average lot size of 23,681,000 square feet. Lot west range from 67.5 to 220.85 and range from 129.35 feet to 283.69 feet deep. Each property shows a 20-yard foot setback, the front 20 or more for the rear property lines and five on the sides. These setbacks meet the minimum requirements for the R3 multiple residence district. The lot size for the twin home lot 12 is 144,619 square feet for nine twin homes or 8,034 square foot per unit. The area is owned R3 multiple residence district. Stat believes that the new residential development will compatible and have a positive upon the surrounding area. The deed of dedication notes that public use streets will be conveyed to the city of Waterloo. Each owner of home lots 1 through 11 shall remain members of the Magnolia Hills Homeowners Association and will be responsible for maintaining the stormwater tract on Track A. Track B will be a public road. A stormwater management plan will be required prior to dismissal of the building permit. All minimum setbacks shall be maintained and all subdivision regulations shall be followed. Final plat has met the following requirements such as legal description, property line dimensions, building line dimensions, date, adjoining subdivisions, deed of dedication, easements, right-of-way, wet stem, proper lot sequence. The final plat is missing engineer certificate of survey and contract and waiver maintenance bonds. Therefore, staff recommends that the request for the final plat in the R3 multiple residence district be approved for the following reasons. The proposed use would appear to have a positive impact on the area by bringing additional housing on vacant land. The proposed development is within the density requirements as set forth in the zoning ordinance for this particular zoning district. The proposed use would not appear to have negative impact on traffic and pedestrian conditions in the area and subject to the following conditions that missing information will be submitted prior to the final plat being forwarded to the city council for approval. And that includes all the engineering comments that were included within the preliminary plat and final plat.
Anyone have any questions for staff?
Yes, I had some questions. The things that were missing and that were discussed on page 25.
Yes.
So those are all going to be completed before everything is approved and before it arrives to the city council.
That is correct. All those items that were addressed on page 25 shall have to be addressed, you know, prior to them even going forward to the city council.
Okay, and then the final plat is missing the engineer certificate and contract waiver maintenance bonds and that will be addressed before everything's finalized as well.
Absolutely, yeah. Those items will be addressed before this is ever submitted to the city council.
Because that, you know, I just wanted to put this out to the commissioners and to chair holding and to... That's what makes me uncomfortable about approving preliminary plats when so many items off the preliminary plat are missing or not fully addressed and then we combine the two to consider both the preliminary and final plats. When that much of things are missing, that kind of makes me uncomfortable when we do that.
This is Flynn. For consistency, this doesn't have Blackhawk County with a date on it either. The first plat, they were required to have Blackhawk County and June 2018, and it's not on this one.
Oh, okay.
So consistency wise, you probably should follow the same.
Sure, absolutely.
And this is Butch. When you were reading the final plat?
Mm-hmm.
I'm just concerned, well, not concerned, it's just a question. These areas I talked about down before as being zoned R4, R3, R3 twin homes, but up above, when you're talking about the impact on the neighborhood, you talk about single-family homes. I'm just, I didn't drive out there. Are there single-family homes in the area?
Currently, they're just mostly twin homes and condos or, I don't, gosh, I mean, there might, I just don't, there might be some single-family homes, I just don't remember like in the near...
Further down on West Chester.
Further down on West Chester, okay, yeah.
Okay, that was my question.
Oh, okay.
Whether it was, which it was, for sure.
Sure, okay. Sorry about the confusion.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Is there anyone here from the developer, from the engineering firm, or someone representing that would like to come forward and talk about this? You don't have to if you don't want to, but have the opportunity. Please give us your name, address, and make your comments.
Aaron Miller with CGA, Cedar Falls, 5106 Nordic Drive. As far as the missing items, we kind of fast-tracked this through the office and we've agreed to have everything finished before it goes to council and understand the reasons why. So we just wanted kind of a approval of the two P and Z and we're getting, currently working on every, all the items and also the engineering plans for it.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Miller?
No, not for me, thanks.
Thank you.
Philip Shirk, 1732 Piner's Lane in Waterloo. I'm one of the developers on this and I guess the big thing that we just wanted to accomplish with this is this land was being sold one way or another and I've been looking at this land for about two years now and, you know, looking at how, like you had said, positively impacting Waterloo beyond that. So like what could be the, you know, with the obvious zoning there that being R3, you know, there could have been a lot of other things done with it. And so my thing was thinking about growth of Waterloo and then I live in that neighborhood, you know, and it's around mostly single-family. So I just want to say, okay, what could be an extension of this neighborhood? And then also a big thing that I've been seeing because I'm in real estate as well was with the condo side of it was how could we, there's kind of a need right now in Waterloo with the baby boomer generation kind of turning over right now out of their homes they've been in for a long time. So we just thought, okay, you know, here's another opportunity because we're developing Trent Lane to the south there as well, doing the eight condos there. And how can we expand off that and keep growing what we have right now rather than it going to another developer that say, you know, somehow gets away with potentially doing some sort of apartment complex there, whatever? Because obviously there's a lot more risk in this. Single-family lots in Waterloo, you know, can potentially sit for a long time, especially in this, in this price point for what we're trying to do, but I think that it's the right thing to do. The same thing with Trent Lane. I had the opportunity to up the density there, but chose to stick with eight condos as it was recommended to me as 10, but I just thought, you know, hey, here's another thing that we could look, you know, driving up West Forest Street, you know, here's another thing that could look a little bit better than another apartment building or another high-density project that seemed to be the norm. So, yeah, I guess that's what I have to say.
Okay. Are there any questions? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Is there anyone else in the room, either for or against this item, that would like to make a presentation? Okay, seeing no one, we'll have discussion amongst the commissioners or a motion one way or the other.
I guess I would so move the request by CGA Engineering on behalf of Thirty-Something Real Estate LLC for the preliminary and final plat of 10.02 acres for Magnolia Hills to allow for the development of a 12-lot residential subdivision, subject to the following conditions that missing information will be subjected prior to the final plat being forwarded to the city council for approval. Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
And was that for the preliminary and final?
That's, yeah.
Let me make sure.
Yes.
Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Thank you, that motion's carried. The next item on our agenda is the vacation of, well, it's request by Stice Holdings to vacate a 20-by-100.46-foot or 2,009.2-square-foot public alley located to the northwest of 2022 Jefferson Street. Staff report?
This is Storm Office Staff. The applicant is seeking to vacate a portion of an alley northwest of Jefferson Street. The site has been zoned M1 light industrial district since the adoption of zoning ordinance in 1969. Surrounding land uses and their zoning is commercial, zoned M1 light industrial district in all directions. Commercial buildings in the area were developed between 1936 and 2005. Low elementary schools located 0.334 miles to the northwest across US Highway 218. Hoover Middle School is located 2.24 miles to the southwest and East High School is located 1.28 miles to the north. There is overhead power lines along the alley, so an easement will need to be maintained. There's 36-inch sanitary sewer line in West 18th Street, four-inch drain tiles along east side of Jefferson and a gas main located along Jefferson. The request to vacate the alley north of 2022 Jefferson would not appear to have negative impact on the area or surrounding traffic conditions. The alley has not been used for, as a public access alley for many years if ever and the previous owner of the property to the north, Integra Auto, used the alley to right-of-way for, to park vehicles. The alley abuts two properties. The applicant is to the south and requesting to vacate the alley that the city no longer needs. There are two properties located north, both recently changed hands, previously owned by Integra Auto, now owned by Dale R. Olson of Waterloo. When the site was owned by Integra Auto, they used the alley right-of-way to display cars. Staff has not heard from the northern property owner on whether they would want to cross-easement to maintain access to the property. Appears the northern property does have approximately 10-foot driveway to access the lot without using the current alley. The property also, the northern properties also have access to West 18th Street. The western portion of the alley was vacated by ordinance 1534 on November 13, 1939. And it's noted here that we have attempted to contact Principal's Prairie Construction to notify them of proposed vacate. We did get a letter from them and they're here to testify, so I'll let them say what they feel and therefore staff recommends the request to vacate the 20-by-100.46-foot 2,009.2-square-foot alley located north of 2022 Jefferson be approved for the following reasons. The request would not appear to have negative impacts around the area. The request to vacate would not appear to have a negative impact on vehicular and pedestrian traffic. The alley's not been used for right-of-way for many years. However, the applicant does need the right-of-way to access his business with the following conditions: an easement be maintained across the vacated alley for access to utilities and that assigned intent to vacate form be turned in with the signature of the owner of the properties to the north of the alley before the vacate can be sent to city council for approval.
Anyone have any questions for staff?
Yes, this is Do Not. My question was, the staff had not heard from that northern neighbor who had concerns previously according to what's in the staff report. Have we heard from that neighbor or anything more about their concerns that they had previously?
They did not have concerns. The property to the west, it used to be Prairie Construction and that person's here, they could talk about it, but the property to the north, they have not been able, they have not been in contact with us.
Okay, so it's the western property that has...
Right, exactly.
That wants to speak to it.
This is Flynn. Who maintains the alley right now?
It hasn't been maintained, as far as I can tell.
It's not even apparent that an alley is theirs.
No, there isn't.
So this property owner has been plowing the snow in that area?
Actually, there used to be trees there. From the Google images, you can see trees along it. However, the Google image is from 2012 and since then, apparently all the trees have been removed in that area, but yeah, it's not been maintained, so.
Can you just visually point out on the map where you're talking about that the northern property still has, they still can access their property?
Yeah.
Where the applicant is that they need to have the alley? So that's...
So you see where all the cars are?
Yeah.
That used to be Integra Auto and they do have about 10, we measured about 10 feet of driveway that's not on the part of the alley and then they also have access to the north on 18th Street.
Got it.
So, so this is the, it's the, so on the map, oh, there it is. The southern huge building there then, that's the one that would, that wants access to be able to use that?
Correct.
Drive, is that correct?
Correct.
That's the applicant.
Yeah, that's the applicant.
Okay.
This is me. The property to the west, I believe they have access south of 18th Street, but they have access, they will no longer have access through this alley onto their back area then?
Correct.
But they haven't had, have they?
Yeah, he could...
I suppose technically speaking, they have, but...
Right.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? Hey, thanks, John.
Yep.
Is the applicant or someone representing the applicant here that would like to come forward and make a presentation to the commission? Okay. Seeing no one, is there anyone else in the room that would like to come forward and make a presentation to the commission? Please keep your comments within five minutes and give us your name and address.
My name is Bernie Oenthum and I'm representing Prairie Construction Company who has property bordering on this alley. Our address is 321 West 18th Street and our concern is that this, if the alley is to be beaded to someone else, we would lose the right to have a secondary exit out of our property. And the reason that that's interesting to us is our existing access is on 18th Street and the traffic there is quite fast and getting in and out is an issue. If we were to develop this into a different use or if someone were to purchase it and need it, a secondary access out of this property would be important. The staff has indicated that the alley is not used and that's not totally true. If you look carefully at the drawing, they had a bigger scale of it, you'd see that on the left corner at Prairie's property, there's a fence and that fence basically diagonally divides the alley. Everything on the left side of that fence was basically maintained by the auto dealership. Everything on the right side was maintained by Prairie Construction Company. Prairie recently sold the shop building, which is the property that is now asking for a vacate. Our access in the past was that we could drive around that alley and come back in at the lower side and exit. So there hasn't been any change in the grades other than when they ripped out all of the dirt, they also, or ripped out all of the trees, they also ripped out quite a bit of dirt. I guess what we're stating is we don't want to be not, don't want to be denied access or a secondary access out of our property, although that access would be a city alley that's existed since at least 1939. Any questions?
This is Flynn. How much traffic do you, how often? How much traffic do you, how often do you use it? I mean, do your trucks use it? What, what do you use it for primarily?
Well, right now, we don't use it, other than for maintaining it. We have it up for sale. Again, if I'm denied a secondary access, that could affect people that were looking at the property. We've actually had one interested party that would need a secondary access to Jefferson, although that particular party has now lost interest in our project. So I just, I'm trying to avoid being denied access to Jefferson. Any other questions?
So I, I do have one. So there's Steeze Holdings LLC?
Yes.
Is that the group that was planning on or thought about buying that, your building?
They, they bought that parcel that they have now, yes.
The land and, or the?
We sold that parcel to them.
The whole, the land? Or the building? Sorry.
Actually, there's two parcels up there. There's Prairie's office and the shop building that they just purchased.
Okay.
That property was divided. The dividing line is one side of the alley.
Got it.
So we no longer can drive through their, through their property to, to get out, which we've done for, ever since I've been in their business for about forty years. Also, there's electric utilities that come off of Jefferson and go overhead. There's a pole that is on the edge of the alley or in the alley right-of-way and that entrance is the main entrance to Prairie's property, so somehow if it remains an alley or an access, at least we have that still in existence. Without that, there's going to have to be easements and cross-easements and all kinds of different things to make it work.
This is Wilbur. Do we know why, do we have more details on why the applicant wants the alley vacated?
It's their primary, their primary in and out is that alley, so that's why they would like, you know?
They actually have to.
If it's vacated, they want it. You know, they want rights to it.
They actually have to drive through that divided alley fence to get to the approach of the alley.
Right.
Want me to point?
So are they landlocked without that then?
It's an alley and they have access to it.
Well, yeah, actually.
This is Schrader with staff. No, they have street frontage along Jefferson Street, so they could put in a different access. Now, there is grade issues as the farther southeasterly along Jefferson you go and on just east or southeasterly of the alley, there are some utility conflicts too. So there could be some difficulty in putting in a different access, but they are not landlocked. They do have frontage along Jefferson Street. They could, in theory, put in a new driveway there, but they requested the vacate to just maintain ownership of where their current access is, which is through the alley.
The alley approach was put in heavy duty because when we were using it, we had semi-trucks and cranes going in and out of there through the same gate and the same way that they are having to use it now.
So let me get, if no action is taken, neither property is necessarily negatively impacted, correct?
This is Schrader with staff. This actually was first raised by city staff. The engineering department was reviewing right-of-way and identified this as a stub alley. Under current policy, it would have never been allowed to be left like this. When the remainder of the block was vacated, apparently back in nineteen thirty-nine, this little stub was left. The engineering staff pointed out that this stub didn't, does not get used as a public alley. It's used for access for these two or three, was two at the time, now three properties, but it's not being used for, as a, a public alleyway for a through fare. So it was the engineering department's suggestion that we look at vacating it. So our office sent a letter to the two adjoining property owners and noted that the city did not need it as a public alley and if they had interest in vacating it, the one adjoining property owner then submitted the application requesting to vacate it.
So this is Wilbur. So have you explored the option, I think maybe you'd mentioned of potentially negotiating an easement if this vacation goes through, seeing if they'd be willing to entertain an easement to allow for additional access to that lot?
Well, I haven't had a chance to talk with the adjacent property owner that's interested in this. I just got the paperwork here last Friday, so I'm a little short on time for, for being able to digest it all and see if there were some other options that would work.
This is Holdeman. Would you be averse to an easement for access if this were vacated?
I don't know the exact answer for that because I'm not sure how that would affect us.
Okay.
I mean, it's possible, but it's also possible not so.
Okay. This is Mehe. I'm wondering if there's a, you know, we have a condition in there that the properties to the north need to be, have a written approval along with it. I'm wondering if adding, adding the property to the west as well would be sufficient enough to have some time for you guys to digest it and, and figure out a solution is, I mean, does that seem like a reasonable condition to kind of move things along, but take everybody's, how would a property, how this would affect everybody, make sure they're involved in the conversation?
Well, this is Holdeman. I'm sitting here wondering if we shouldn't table it until the, all the property owners can come to an agreement.
It sounds to me like we said, who wants it?
We, the city, said, who wants it?
These were the first folks to raise their hand and I remember back to the issue with the jet lounge where we vacated an alley and negatively impacted the business to the point where they shut down. The last thing I'd want to do is diminish property value as they're trying to see some development on that land, all because we decided we wanted to get rid of an alley just for the sake of getting rid of it. So, yeah, I would, I would support the idea of.
I'll make a motion to table the.
It's been moved to table this item?
Second.
And seconded, any further discussion?
Can we, motion?
Two.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion?
This is Flynn. I think that's the wisest thing to do because why are we disrupting people for no reason? I mean, I think we need to present a solution if we're going to disrupt people and especially since it's for sale. I mean, negatively impacting his potential to sell the property also.
It would give the applicant a time, I mean, if it comes up at another meeting to appear as well and then by the adjoining.
It would give the adjoining property owners time to digest and examine how they could either benefit or how it would be a detriment to them. Okay, we have a motion to table.
Can I just get a clarification on this part? Somebody said, I'm not sure it was him or, or the staff or who is, I didn't, again, I didn't drive by this, usually I do this, but is there a fence down the middle of that alley? Is that what you guys said?
He said there was a diagonal fence by the tree.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, and I was just going to point out, point of clarification that July's meeting is July tenth, not the third of the fourth.
Right.
Yeah.
That's what it says on here, July tenth.
Okay, any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Okay, it's carried. That item is tabled until July tenth. The next item, encroachment agreements. This is a request by Sue Dawson, Jeff Streblo and Doug Abkis for an encroachment agreement to allow for twenty-eight large rocks within the right-of-way located at twelve fourteen and twelve eighteen Janey Avenue and ten thirty-five Wilbur Avenue. Staff report?
Yeah, yeah, this is Hiberger with the staff report. The applicant is requesting, request by Jeff Streblo, Sue Dawson, Doug Abkis for an encroachment agreement to install large rocks in city right-of-way along twelve fourteen Janey Avenue, twelve eighteen Janey Avenue and ten thirty-five Wilbur Avenue. The applicants are requesting approval for the large rocks that have been installed in the city right-of-way along twelve fourteen Janey Avenue, twelve eighteen Javany Avenue and ten thirty-five Wilbur Avenue in order to prevent trucks and other vehicles from destroying their front yard. The request would not appear to have a negative impact surrounding areas. The large rocks will only be placed in the front yard and only approximately eighteen inches in height. The request would not appear to have a negative impact on traffic or pedestrian conditions in the area because the rocks are only approximately eighteen inches high and would not impede visibility of traffic along Janey Avenue or Wilbur Avenue, although, you know, they do create a potential safety hazard for vehicles that accidentally leave the roadway and might hit a large rock. There are no sidewalks located along either property. Project site is a half mile north of Sergeant Road Trail. The, the property in question is owned C two commercial district and has been zoned as such since the zoning ordinance was adopted in nineteen sixty-nine. The immediate vicinity is also zoned C two commercial district. Commercial area started developing in the late nineteen fifties and saw more develop in nineteen eighties. Many of the area residences, however, were built in the nineteen forties or nineteen sixties. No buffers or additional screening would be a part of this request. Request would not appear to impact drainage in the area. The encroachment area is not located within the floodplain. There are no parks, open spaces within the immediate vicinity of the project area. There's eight-inch sanitary main, fifteen-inch storm sewer located underneath both Wilbur Avenue and Janey Avenue. However, there are no known utilities within the encroachment area. The applicants will ever be responsible for removing these large rocks at their own expense in the event a utility provider needs access to city right-of-way to address repairs or other concerns. Water Works also noted that if large rocks need to be removed due to water main break, they would remove the large rock as carefully as possible, but the restoration would be the responsibility of the homeowners. Property is located in an area shown as a future land use map is commercial. Frozen encroachment area is also located in a primary growth area as identified on the comprehensive plan. Applicants are just requesting approval for the large rock that have already been installed in city right-of-way along twelve fourteen Janey Avenue, twelve eighteen Janey Avenue and ten zero three five Wilbur Avenue in order to prevent trucks and other vehicles from destroying their front yard. These three homes are surrounded by commercial uses on two sides and are just using these large rocks to keep traffic from these commercial businesses from driving on their property. Large rocks have been in place for several years, but recently came to the attention of code enforcement. The applicants have indicated that before the large rocks were placed, they frequently had problems with trucks driving across the grass next to the roadway. There's no platting in regards to this request. Staff, with further presence of an additional utilities and potential impacts existing, but if concerns for impact on utilities can be satisfactory addressed. Staff recommends that the request for an encroachment agreement to allow for replacement of the large rocks with an easement be approved for, for the following reasons. The request would not appear to have a negative impact on traffic conditions in the area and subject to a signed and executed encroachment agreement that enables the city of Waterloo to terminate the agreement and right to remove large rocks in the event the area is needed for street or utility purposes. And that's Hiberger with the staff report.
Okay, other questions for staff?
Yes, this is Do Not. Was there any need for the applicant in this item to request permission instead of just putting the rocks in, asking for permission retroactively? Did they need to ask permission at some point before they put the rocks in place?
I mean, I guess, yeah, they, they, they installed the rocks within the right-of-way and, you know, you know, potentially, you know, should have asked for, for permission ahead of time, but, you know, it just came to the attention of code enforcement, so they're just trying to rectify a code enforcement issue as well as, you know, just to leave the rocks there just so they can, you know, protect the front yards of their property. But, but, you know, they, they should have asked ahead of time, but, you know, are, are trying to rectify the situation now.
And so they're just asking for approval from the Plating and Zoning Commission because the rocks are in the right-of-way?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
This is Flynn. As far as you mentioned legality of it, so the current homeowners are there. As far as a liability, if, you know, who's liable if they hit that rock and something really bad happens? The liability of the rock there, one question. And then second, going forward, if the current homeowners, is there something that legally goes with the house on the sale of the real estate that they have to maintain the access for the utilities and the legalities of the rocks being there going forward if they sell the house?
Let's, yeah, I guess, I guess not, not exactly quite sure one hundred percent about the legality of, of, of the rocks, but, you know, I guess as was noted in the staff report that, you know, if, if utility access is needed, that, you know, they'll have to essentially be removed at their expense and they'd have to put them back in, in their expense.
This is Anderson with staff. And so the encroachment agreement would be recorded document, so it would go with the sale, so it would be caught. In terms of liability, you know, there's always some things in the, you can see in the pictures, there, there's a fire hydrant, things like that, you know, speaking with the insurance, you know, there's oftentimes some landscaping features or things like that in the right-of-way so that the city was not worried about the additional liability. There is some notations about liability in the encroachment agreement that they are aware they're putting them out in the right-of-way as well, but.
Yeah, this is Do Not again. I did have a concern about, you know, how, how some of the rocks are placed near the one fire hydrant in the pictures that are provided in the package and also there's one that's placed near the storm drain. I mean, I was kind of thinking that there might be a problem in terms of where things are placed, you know, so has that come up with Waterloo and Waterloo Fire and Rescue? Have they raised concerns about placement?
Yeah, well, the, at the, at the technical review committee, they, they did not raise, fire department did not raise any concerns, but, you know, basically, you know, if they got to be moved, they got to be moved, you know, whether, whether it's access for utilities or whether it's access to a fire hydrant.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
This is Butch. I noticed on west along Janey Avenue, there's no curb and gutter there. Is there ever a plan for putting it there? Would that be engineering that would say something along those lines?
They left. At this point, there are no plans to, to go back and retrofit any existing roads that do not have curb and gutter with curb and gutter.
Any other questions? Hey, thank you.
Thank you.
Is, are the applicants or someone representing the applicants here? And if so, if you would like to come up and give us your name and address and make your presentation, five minutes or less?
Jeff Streblo, twelve fourteen Janey. I'm the one that started the whole thing. I put rocks, well, and according to that picture, there's two feet of dirt in between the grass and the road, because when they were originally put in there, there was over six feet of grass, because I was smart enough to know you don't put them next to the road. But I had a one and a half-year-old daughter. I put them there. There was cars sliding up five feet from my house because of the kids flying out of there through Maple Lanes and stuff. I stopped them. And they, they've been there for twenty-four years. They weren't there just a few years ago. So, but somebody else a few blocks away put rocks right on the edge of the road and them taking a snowplow hit them. So that's how our rocks got involved. They drove around the neighborhood and, ooh, there's some rocks there, we gotta get these folks. And like I said, they've been twenty-four years. Nobody's complained about them. And the rocks by the little, the fire hydrant, they're probably only like this, so there's nothing that's going to stop a fire when you get that. I mean, if you've got any other questions, I'll answer them. They're heavy. I put them in when I was twenty-nine. Six years old now, I'm hoping you. Six years old now, I'm hoping you guys just say, okay, leave them there.
Any questions?
And we do still do the dirt that's, I showed you, was telling you there's two feet of dirt. That's still from our local traffic through there that some reason that road ain't wide enough for them, and they swing all the way up in there. And actually, the snowplows are a problem, too. It's, they can, they're far from hitting them. I mean, they're six feet there. So I don't know. We tried putting them fiberglass sticks in there in the winter to let the guys know the road is straight. But if you stood out there, the road in front of our house is, I'd say, 10 feet wider than the road that's one block down. Because we got mailboxes on one side. We'd be on the south side of our block. Mailboxes on the north side of the next block down. So that gives them plow drivers an idea where they're at, but when they get down to ours, I don't know if they're having a sandwich or what, they drift over into our yard. So, I mean, we would like a solution to, can you put posts in the ground? And just in the wintertime, so they know where the edge of the road is? And I'm not mean not on the road, but three feet in, so they don't come all the way up into our yard. I mean, they tore the sod all off this last winter. So we're always working to try to make it look nice, too.
This is Flynn, and I just have a question. But as far as the snowplow driver, I live with the curb, and my street gets, my grass gets cut, too. So I think it's kind of hard to be a snowplow driver, too, to know exactly where you're at on the road.
Yeah.
So give grace in that space, but.
I'm just worried, you know, I put them six feet up off of the road when the, before they did this blacktop-type road. Because I know sometimes they come through and they want to push it up farther.
Right.
I understood that, but this is now they're getting closer and closer and closer.
But.
How do I let them know, hey, the road is over this way, not that way?
Right, it's a good question. And wondering if you ever had any cars hung up on those rocks?
No.
Okay, thank you.
You mentioned, this is Budgeon. You mentioned the fiberglass pole things, and I know what you're talking about because I've seen those around fire hydrants and stuff like that. And I actually do see one on the fire hydrant here. So was that not a deterrent? The snowplows didn't notice those?
Well, we got the problem with all the kids hanging out at Maple Lane, so when we put stuff in the yard, you know, what's that to a 14-year-old? Hey, I can take this.
All right.
So we put them in, they take them out. You know, we do a lot to try to let the drivers know where the road is.
Right.
I, this is just a comment, but I live near the corner of 11th and Ridgeway. And there is a house there. When you come up 11th, everybody knows about the huge rocks that got put in their yard. And I think it was the city, actually, that put them there because too many people were going up 11th Street and not noticing that there was a cross street and heading into their yard. I'm wondering if the city could possibly put something a little higher that might help that out.
This is Anderson with staff. I wish I could say we were the good guys. We're actually the bad guys, probably, in that one. He actually asked the city to put one of those metal railings, and they would not. And so he put the rocks there. The homeowner did put the rocks there.
I misunderstood that, that was, that's the neighborhood jibe that.
We didn't help.
Gossip was wrong.
But I just, I just didn't know if we could put a hammer, a metal post in, something that the kids can't pull up and steal, have the reflectors on it, three foot in from the edge of the road. Because I know the plow's gotta get to the edge and push it off.
I made a note to contact the public works director, so we'll get that answer to you.
Okay.
They also live by Nagel signs, and they have semis that come down their street. And, I mean, they take up the whole road. They don't care where they go or how they back up or what's going on, as long as they can get them semis down them streets and around them corners. That telephone pole that you guys see on one of these, I don't know if you see it or if it's on one of them or not, but it used to have two feet of land in front of it. Now it's right up to the pole. That's where they live. They have people, semis dragging up into their yard if they, over the curb and gutter, because they do not have the rocks up there. It goes on all the time.
Okay. Folks, we should probably have you give your name and address, but let's wait till Mr. Streblo's done.
I'm done. You want these spicy ones?
Oh, okay.
I originally put them in there because I didn't want my kid to get hit.
Sure.
They, and they dry, get, their yard gets driven up into it. Sue goes, can you get me some rocks? Okay, I'll get you some rocks. And I went to Doug's house because he was always out fixing his yard because the semis would pull up, and I work at a semi dealership, so they're heavy. Turn a steering wheel, and you're gonna have a six-foot rut in your yard. So he's out there fixing them all the time. And we went through this once before with Barry, some other councilman, and we were hewing it out with Nagel and stuff, and they just said, okay, we're gonna leave everything alone. And then, that's why we thought, you know, when this come up, we didn't, I thought we had this all settled. But that's, that's why it went through everybody's yards is they were getting them all tore up and stuff.
Okay.
Can I make a motion?
Sure, sure. Well, go ahead.
I would make a motion to approve the request for an encroachment agreement along, to install large rocks in the city right-of-way along 1214 Janey Avenue, 1218 Janey Avenue, and 1035 Wilbur Avenue, W I L B U R, with the following condition, a signed, executed encroachment agreement that enables the city of Waterloo to terminate the agreement and right to remove large rocks in the event that the area is needed for street or utility purposes. Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All, if there's no further discussion?
No, I have a question real quick. Is there any need for the city to actually place the rocks or some kind of barrier what we're talking about, if it's not rocks? Or to reimburse the homeowners for doing such things and the cost of placing the barriers into the correct spots so that it does what it is intended to do?
Well, the rocks have been there for 25 years, so the value of a rock might be a little more now. 25 years ago, I mean, I don't think you could do that.
Okay.
He wants to, yeah.
Okay, it's, is there any further discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That's carried. Leave the rocks there for another 25 years.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next item on our agenda is the annexation request by the city of Waterloo to annex 20.22 acres of land along the east side of North Elk Run Road, located northwest of 4455 Remington Road.
This is Anderson with staff. Essentially, the city is buying the land from John and Desi Rottinghouse, as seen on there, which is the 20.22 acres. That actually includes 19.08 acres of land that they own. And plus, it's about half of the right-of-way road in there since that was acquired by easement. Therefore, we'll be annexing that in to make that consistent through the area. Primarily an industrial area, so the city is buying this for industrial spec land. We will be working to annex this land and then add it into the TIF district as well out in this area to try and bring new industry to the area. Property zoned agricultural district in the county zoning ordinance. Again, noting, it's primarily industrial in this area with John Deere to the west. The quarry is to the north. The quarry, we did contact the quarry owners when the land came up for sale to see if basic materials wanted to acquire this. They do not, because they've done some rock and soil testing in the area, and it's not suitable for their develop, for their mining purposes. No portion of the property is located within a special flood hazard area. You can see there is a drainage way through the area that is actually not a floodplain, but it is a drainage way. So upon development of the site, that drainage way would be accommodated in a stormwater plan. Future land use map design indicates the area to be annexed as agricultural since it's in the county. When it's a, it'll be changed on the land use map for the city in the future to be indicated as industrial. Therefore, staff recommends the annexation be approved for the following reasons. The request is in conformance with the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan due to past infrastructure investment in the area for industrial development, making this a smart growth project. The request would appear beneficial to the continued development of the northeast industrial park area and would appear compatible to surrounding industrial development. The request would put more land into the city limits in the primary growth area, and the request would be a 100% voluntary annexation.
Any questions for staff?
This is Budgeon. Is that, that diagonal through there? Yeah. Is that a road? What is that?
That is the drainage way.
That's, oh, that's what you're talking about.
Yep, it primarily originates over on John Deere property to the northwest. And again, it's not even a floodplain, so it's a pretty minor drainage way area. But we would have to accommodate that drainage way coming through there when the land would be developed in the future.
Mrs. Flynn, what, how do you value that land for sale?
The city council did approve buying it for, I think it was 13,000 an acre. I was looking at Tim to see if he remembered, which is what we negotiated with the property owners.
At assessed value, or what, how do you?
Assess, no, because it's being sold as development property. The assessed value would be ag property. So it would be ag value, so it'd be a lot lower. But that was very similar to what we had bought per acre for other land in similar conditions of just being primarily farmland next to infrastructure in the area.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, unless you have a comment, Tim, I'm assuming that we can move on to a motion or further discussion.
Make a motion to approve the annexation.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Get, it's carried. Our next item is plans and studies. It's the expansion of the northeast industrial urban renewal area and TIF district.
So is this, is this item covering the same topic we just discussed in the previous item?
Yeah, this is Anderson with staff. So we will be expanding the northeast industrial TIF district over this area to utilize TIF funds to acquire this land. We'll actually be requesting the county to allow us to expand the TIF over this area while it's still in the county. It'll make the process faster. Otherwise, we'd have to annex it first and then do the TIF, so this way we can do them simultaneously. So we'll have that request, the board supervisors, probably the next week or so. But we're working in partnership with county to try and make that faster for the sale and so we get this out there on the market.
That makes sense.
Do you have a staff report, or do we?
That's all I got.
Okay.
Any question?
I just wondered with, from the old packet to the new, the total area changed. Is that just?
And that was really, in speaking with, in speaking through the process with the attorneys, we added in the right-of-way. So the land parcel's actually 19.08 acres. And then Eric added in that portion of Elk Run Road there that abuts it. A lot of those county roads, when they were first built, were built on an easement. So this way, we'll actually annex that land in as part of ours.
Yeah, because that's about five acres more, so that's.
Correct.
Quite a bit of.
And really, you know, there is a northeast industrial park, industrial corridor study going on with InterCog. And then the partners in that are Waterloo, Raymond, Elk Run Heights, Evansdale, and the county. And so that'll also give us more funding options by having that annexed in and part of the TIF as we're doing improvements along that corridor.
So do we need to have a motion, or is that just information?
I think they want a motion.
I think we do need to have a motion on that.
So move to approve, how do, how is that language of the motion? I was going to offer a motion to approve the TIF annexation to include the items discussed in both agenda items. How do I?
Expansion of the TIF district.
Yeah, so I offer that motion.
I'll second that.
Hey, it's been moved and seconded. If there's no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye. I guess I don't get a vote, do I? Next, we have discussion items. Are there any?
So I have a minor discussion item. This is, this is Do Not again. Should we have in 2020, 2020 is an election year as well as this year being an election year, should we have the planning and zoning meeting during the primary election day the same way that we have the meeting on the second, on the second Tuesday in November? Should we have a both, kind of a similar way?
It'd be up to the commission if you want to change it. We did change it on election day, so it would be on the same night. I mean, I think these meetings get people excited to want to go out and vote myself, but.
Yeah. Now, see, I'm just, I'm just putting, I'm putting that out because, because for me, it doesn't matter. I'm gonna go out and vote either way, and I'm gonna go out and vote on the 6th of November, whether we were gonna have these meetings on that Tuesday or whether we're gonna have a meeting on the 13th. So to me, it doesn't matter for the date. I just, wanting for consistency, like today's election day for the primary election, whether we should have that same consistency as we do on election day in the fall.
Yeah, I mean, it'd be entirely, entirely up to the commission.
We've usually handled it the month before, if I recall.
And the voting polls are open from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., so I don't think our little two-hour window deters people. Hopefully, less than two-hour window.
As long as it's two-hour window.
Yeah.
I always just think back to Jeff Danielson was on the commission, and he used to like to come here on election day just to relax for a couple hours from that. So it was always just kind of funny to watch him.
Well, and there could be a positive.
His mind was racing as he was sitting here.
It could make people remember to vote, like I came in today and, oh.
Yeah, so whatever decision is made, I don't really mind.
And as staff, I just have to be here whenever you tell me to.
Well, I think we can talk about it in October, then.
Yeah, sounds good to me.
Because next month, we already have a date change, so.
Sounds good, sounds good to me.
Any motion to adjourn? Anything else? We have a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
I'll just put all.
Adjourn all.